This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, I'm Michael Fried, North Haven's First Selectman, and welcome to our July Board of Selectmen Meeting. Joined, as always, by our Second Selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our Third Selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Thank you very much for joining us, and I hope everyone had a very nice Fourth of July. I'd like to start off by asking everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, item number two, any public comment on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to item number three, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen Meeting from June 7th.
I'll move the approval of those minutes.
All second.
All right, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, approval of the minutes from the Special BOS Meeting from June 14th.
I'll move to approve those minutes from the Special Board of Selectmen Meeting from June 14th.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, I don't have anything to report tonight, so we're going to skip over that. I'd like to give Sally the time, she has requested three items on this agenda, so Sally, the floor is yours.
Yes, okay, thank you. I put three items on the agenda, and I appreciate, I requested three items, and I appreciate you putting them on, as you always do. The first one is a discussion of the Open Space Grant. It's pretty much a follow-up discussion that I put on because a couple of citizens had contacted me with a little confusion about it. We had some discussions, we announced the grant quite some time ago, and there was, we discussed it, I think, at either a Board of Selectmen and/or Board of Finance Meeting. But just for a little bit of background, we, at a town meeting, but we had authorized a million dollars for bonding, right? And in March of 2017, at a Board of Selectmen Meeting, we authorized the purchase of 182 King's Highway, and that was for $447,500. And then the following month, April 6th of 2017, we authorized the First Selectmen to execute a sales agreement, purchasing 603 Middletown Avenue for $382.5. And as you recall, Mike, I was very supportive of your Open Space Initiative, and commended you for it, you know, for two reasons. One, it's good to, for the town to have open space for future generations, and I really also, secondly, respected your underlying philosophy a year or two ago, as an offensive strategy against 8-30G affordable housing challenges. So, you know, I fully supported the purchases, and that, so we made two purchases of $830,000 out of the million. And at the time of the March, in March, at the March 2017 meeting for the King's Highway property, which was known as the Sinaway Property, Public Works Director Lynn Sedowski told us of the likelihood of getting a grant to, from the state, they had, I guess, their own open space project, and we had applied for it, but, you know, that takes, you know how it is, applying for the state, that could take forever, so we went ahead and purchased the property, and then you announced very, it was happy news, that we did in fact get the grant. So that's sort of the background, and the question that I've been asked by a couple of different people is, where is that grant money? Where does that money go? It's about $200,000. So I just wanted to clarify, I talked with the Finance Director a couple of times this week, to verify that I understood it correctly, that it doesn't get added into the million dollars, because we, then that would exceed the million dollar authorization.
That's right.
So it basically, ultimately goes to the general fund.
In the end.
In the end, yes.
Temporarily could get parked in an open space fund, but it then ends up going through the general fund.
Right, you can't, you know, we have, like I said, we spent between those two contracts, I described from last year, the total purchase prices, I mean, this was a public document, it was $830,000, so it's not like we have the 170 plus 200, which is the grant, meaning we have 370 left. So that's what I wanted to clarify, there are folks out there that think, yeah, and so, I just wanted to once and for all clarify that, that that's not how exactly it works. Now, it's my understanding that we might go forward with another bonding, what are your...
Yeah, so, yes, because it's in the five-year capital plan, a million dollars. We spent 830 or 840, which leaves us with 160 or 170.
Yeah, in there, yeah.
And you're right, you're absolutely right, we cannot oversee the, exceed the million dollars. So, but we're finding that there is a dwindling amount of available property, because you need a willing seller, in an effort to implement open space. So now we have two properties that Lynn and the Open Space Commission are looking at. One is on Ridge Road in the 3300 block, and the other is in easement, we're trying to work out, near the Boy Scout property up there. Now, we don't know what the total amount of those two properties would be, I'm guessing it's going to be about $500,000 or $600,000. So that would coincide with the next round that we have in the five-year capital plan.
Okay.
But beyond that, there's not a lot out there.
Right, the original list of properties, going back a year and a half ago, that the Open Space Advisory Board had presented, had about 10, maybe 12 properties on it, and some have, and some were really not within our range to purchase, others, I think, have sold elsewhere, perhaps. So that would be down the line, but one question I had for you is, if, if we really wanted this $200,000 grant, which we received because we purchased that King's Highway property, if we really wanted that money to roll over to a future sale, could we get an authorization from the, a town meeting to use 200,000 from the general fund, like we did on June 25th at the town meeting for the school security program, so that we would bond for less to buy our next purchase? You know what I mean?
Yes, no, I know exactly what you mean, and that would certainly be a good way to go, so in other words, the million will become 800, but we, I'm not sure about this, because Ed and I had a discussion about this also, Bill, we may not be able to do it, we may have to get the town attorney involved with that, but yeah, that would be a good course of action, instead of the million, we have the 200, we go 800.
Then we're actually realizing the benefit of the grant...
Yes.
Toward our overall open space project, so I just threw that out as an idea, but I wanted people to understand that the grant, as it is now, does not stay in the open space account.
That's exactly right.
So I just, that's why, you know, folks ask me things, you know, I encourage people to come to meetings, some people don't like to come to meetings, so that's why I put it on the agenda.
And I talked to, I haven't talked to Ed today about that as well.
Okay.
You know, since it was on the agenda, and that was my understanding too, you know, and I could understand the, and it seems like, again, since I'm just looking at the capital plan, since, you know, we do have another, for 2019, '20, another million dollars there, seems like, again, that's not something anybody's going to object to at a, you know, at a town meeting, if we have to go back to a town meeting.
I wonder, yeah, I wonder...
So I think that seems, again, a reasonable approach, you know.
Right.
Especially if it doesn't limit it to properties too.
And I was wondering if this is just shooting from the hip, I'm thinking on my feet here, if we would ever devise some sort of range of acreage that we would think would be appropriate, you know, total, yeah, because we know we have the acreage, I mean, we have certain town parks, you know, and then we made these two purchases, you know, the town is about 14,000 acres, you know, if there's a percentage in mind, like a target, just something to think about that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly a possibility, you know.
Yeah, but, like you say, so correctly, a lot of it is availability, so.
So there's two things for those watching on Open Space that can sometimes be problematic. Number one, the availability of a willing seller, and number two, the discrepancy in the price between the two blue book appraisals that we do, and what the seller may be looking for. And those two components sometimes prevent us from implementing more open space, but we'll see what happens this coming year, we've got it in the five-year capital plan, we're committed to it, we'll see how it goes.
Right, all right, my next item, thank you for that, so hopefully that will satisfy everyone who had asked me about that, that specific grant. The next item that I put on, as you know, during the middle school building project, while the school was being built, we very often had at Board of Selectmen Meetings updates, as a regular agenda item, and Mr. Johns, some, the Chairman of the Building Committee, Middle School Building Committee would come, or Mr. DiNofio, the legal counsel, or perhaps even other members of the Middle School Building Committee might have spoken to us. And at one meeting in particular, and I brought you guys the minutes, April of 2017, there was a rather long discussion of the, the middle school building project at that meeting, and if anyone wants to see it, it's the April 6th, 2017 Board of Selectmen Meeting, and it, the discussion of the middle school starts around minute 43, if you want to fast forward, rather than listen to our exciting Board of Selectmen Meeting. And there was, as you recall, Mike and Bill, last spring, the synthetic turf fields were a bit controversial, some people were opposed to them for potential health reasons, other people had financial concerns, and one thing that was discussed by Mr. Johns, the Chairman of the Building Committee, and Attorney DiNofio, was the possibility of, or of charging non-school organizations for the use of the fields. And even though it's mentioned in the minutes, you know, I watched the meeting quite a few times in preparation for tonight, and I could give you a quote from Mr. DiNofio, he said, quote, he was referring to other towns, and what other towns do, in order to raise revenue when they have turf fields, and he said, and I quote, "They do charge per hour youth sports and non-school organizations, non-school teams, and the money is placed in restricted accounts to pay for replacement," unquote. And Mr. Johns sort of talked about the same thing, that the fields could earn revenue toward replacement, and that was in response to folks who were concerned about the financial aspects. And the reason why I wanted to have a follow-up discussion about that with you guys tonight is because I was appointed by the Chairman of the Board of Ed, Anita Anderson, to her credit, very bipartisan. She appointed me to this ad hoc special committee of about 10 people, I'm not there representing the Board of Selectmen, I'm there as a citizen, and she felt I could bring something to the table because of my 40-plus years' involvement in athletics here in North Haven. She wanted to, she appointed a bunch of people to this committee to give recommendations to the Board of Education on charging for the use of turf fields. And so, you know, we've been meeting for a few months now, and we're getting to the point where it's time to talk about charging for the, for organizations, non-school organizations. Obviously, if the North Haven High School's lacrosse team or soccer team, they're not going to, these are Board of Ed fields, we're talking about non-school organizations, like North Haven Youth Football, or North Haven Lacrosse, a lot of people think, because it says "North Haven," that they're the North Haven Leagues, they're really private, non-school leagues. And so I just wanted to make sure that I understood what was said at that April 6th, 2017 meeting, and that you were sort of understood it the same way, that non-school organizations would be paying to use the synthetic turf fields, as Mr. Johns and Mr. DiNofio said. Do you recall that?
Yeah, but I think a lot has changed since this meeting.
Okay.
It's evolved into a lot of different narratives, and since that meeting, we may have said that was the concept, but we put the committee in place to really determine the criteria. And after that meeting, and that spring and summer, we, we had a lot of, not we personally, but the Board of Ed had a lot of feedback, that people were, were looking at and saying, these are parents now, we're paying to have our children play in the youth sports, we're paying in our taxes because of the bonding for the middle school, and now you're going to ask us to pay a third time to use the fields? So I then was asked my opinion, and I said, you know what, they make a valid point, so what you, and I said this to the Board of Education, what you may want to consider is doing a weekend fee schedule for jamboree for outside teams coming in. And that was the, I think, the concept that they were looking at. So a lot has changed since April of 2017, we're not involved with it, it's a Board of Ed issue, Sally is sitting on the committee, I'm not on the committee, so my feeling on it is this, and I'll repeat it again, because I've said this time and time again, whatever concept is drawn up from the Board of Ed and the committee members, the money generated from that concept will be put aside. Then, we, as a town, reserve the right or the option to book an amount every year as a capital item for future maintenance, or future replacement. Or, like any other municipal project, we would bond for it. And it should be noted too, that if you look at the contract that the Board of Ed has on those fields, it's around 11,000 or 13,000 a year to maintain those turf fields. If those were grass fields, if you look at what we pay to have Vanacore Field, it's almost $50,000 a year. So we can make an argument that the 11,000 or 12,000 a year on the contract to maintain the fields would compare to almost $100,000 a year in maintenance, if you looked at the Vanacore Field formula for grass fields. So there's an inherent savings just in that, versus what the maintenance could have been if they were grass fields. So my position on it is this, whatever the recommendation is, I'm going to accept it, and then we reserve the right to, like I said, either bond for it long-term, put the money aside, and maybe book a capital item expense in each budget for future maintenance, and that's how I see it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I see it a little differently, I see that, you know, the turf fields are a new expense, those, all of our grass fields, we've been maintaining, mowing, and lining by salaried employees for decades.
Vanacore is different.
Vanacore, we have a private contract for, right. And it, it, you know, there certainly, the lights make, make, make a difference as well, and the big item, though, is the replacement, you know, down the line, and eight, I've heard eight years, 10 years, 12 years, so let's say 10 years. But, you know, I, I, so you believe it's sort of, I get your point, that it's evolved, but what you said about parents saying, you know, they're paying for their kids to play, they're taxpayers, so they're contributing to the bonding, and then to be asked to pay extras, you know.
Some of the feedback I received, yeah.
Right, you know, and all I could say to that is, for 15 years, I sponsored a women's softball league, and it was a North Haven League, North Haven Park and Rec, and I paid these, I have copies of the checks, I paid money to the treasurer, you know, this was the registration fee that I had to pay, and I was always told, it's for the lights, it used to go up every year.
1990.
In the 90s, up till about 2000, for 15 years, late 80s to around 2000, I, you know, I owned a home, I was a taxpayer, you know, this was a town league, you know, I had to pay for the balls, pay for the ump, I had to pay this to cover the lights, you know, and I didn't complain, hey, I'm a taxpayer, and, you know, I have to buy my own uniforms, I got to buy my own equipment, I got to buy everything, plus I got to pay, you can see, this is made out to treasurer town in North Haven, you know, and that was a town league. And, you know, this is something that I said at the Board of Education meeting, which is why I think, I mean, the Chairman of the Board of Ed could speak for herself, but I think based on my long experience, that's one of the reasons why she appointed me, because she thought I had some history of paying to play, and I paid a lot to play for many years in North Haven. So I'm not really convinced about that, that argument, that you're a taxpayer, and you're paying to have your kids play, and this would be like a third tax, because I paid the third tax for 15 years, to be in a North Haven League, so, but anyway, so, back, I didn't want to get into the whole thing, I just wanted to, this is a Board of Selectmen Meeting, I wanted to talk about what happened at that Board of Selectmen Meeting...
Right.
...in, in April of 2017, so in your opinion, even though they said that, yes, non-school organizations would be paying, in your opinion, it's evolved now, and we'll go with whatever recommendation, so we'll see.
And the Athletic Director really was involved with this too, so, you know, my position again on this is, you know, I'm not directly involved with this, we point, we appoint committees to make recommendations, whatever the recommendations are, we can choose to accept or reject, but a lot of people, and you're one of them, Sally, you're spending time on this, so...
Yeah, a lot of time, yes.
I'm going to take the recommendations.
Yeah.
This is not a big issue for me, because I know how to handle this for the future, and I know what the savings are by having, by not having to have private contractors on two additional grass fields, because our Board of Ed group would not be able to maintain the two fields, and just like they can't maintain Vanacore. And Vanacore is almost $50,000 a year, I'd have to check the numbers, but...
Yeah.
And even when we went out to bid on Vanacore, and we got a lower cost one year, which was $25,000, the field was not in good shape, and we had a lot of feedback that we got what we paid for. So there's inherent savings by having this contract at 11,000 or 12,000, maybe it's 13, versus what could be $100,000 if they were grass fields. So that's how I see it.
Okay, well, okay, so now I know that you...
It's evolved, yeah.
This committee, we have, for the most part, been working fairly well together, and again, we're just recommending to the Board of Ed, it'll be their final decision as big fields.
Yeah.
So I just, again, wanted to review what you had thought about Mr. Johns's comments at that meeting, a year, a year plus ago, okay. The third thing I put on was an idea that I had for Veterans Day. I know it's July, you know, it's four months away, but, you know, once, once the Fourth of July comes and goes, you know, the summer goes like that, right? So this year, November 11th, 2018, is the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I. And I'm sure there's going to be some major events throughout the country, and really in countries throughout the world, to commemorate that. You know, Canada celebrates November 11th as Remembrance Day, so does England, France, Belgium, they call it Armistice Day, but it was on that day, at 11:00 AM, on the November 11th, the armistice was signed, ending hostilities of World War I. And, you know, I want to say, everybody knows the First Selectmen has great knowledge of baseball and baseball trivia, but his knowledge of history is equally impressive and amazing. So I would hope that you would share my interest in doing something here in North Haven to recognize the 100th anniversary.
Yeah, when I saw this, that Val mentioned you wanted this, I think this is great, and I was going to suggest tonight that both of you work on the program, if you like, with you spearheading it, and Bill being a US Army veteran...
Absolutely.
He would be perfect, a West Point graduate, so I support this 100 percent.
Yeah, we worked well together, working for the 75th anniversary of the Police Department and the parade, and so I was going to suggest that the end of the summer, Bill and I butt heads again. One idea that I had, you know, a lot of you folks are going to be coming to Town Hall this month, because it's tax time, to pay your taxes, and if you walk in to the front door of the Town Hall, there's two sets of doors on Church Street, and in between the two sets of doors, if you look to your right, there's a rather large plaque of the World, the North Haveners who served in World War I, and I, I just thought one thing that we could do, there's about 90 names, and, you know, we have other things that we do every November 11th, and I thought maybe as a special recognition, the three of us could read, to take five or six minutes and read these names aloud at the, you know...
Sure.
There's a lot of familiar names, a lot of street names on the list, and so maybe we could find some descendants that might want to participate.
So would you want to read the names at the event?
Yeah, yeah, so I just thought I'd, I just, but I'm just saying it because, you know, when you come into Town Hall this month to pay your taxes, you might want to just take a look over there, and you'll see, you know, it's, our World War I monument is not on the green, it's in Town Hall, in between the front doors, to the left, there's a Civil War monument, and I just think that, you know, it's the 100th anniver, World War I sort of gets lost a little bit, I think, historically.
Yeah, I support it, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you, so...
Bill, you like it?
No, I think, yeah, I'm very impressed with the fact that, you know, Sally, you know, has come up with these ideas that I think actually, you know, were important, you know, with the, with the police, with their 75th, you know, anniversary, and now with this, that are important historical events for, you know, for the town of North Haven, I mean, so I'd be glad to help, you know, Sally in any way we can.
Yeah, we'll think of something good.
And you're right.
Get the American Legion involved, you know, like, like, you know, like they should, because this plaque was dedicated, you know, I think in conjunction with the, with the American Legion.
To your point you made earlier, Sally, if you look at these names, they're either street names, or still very well-respected people in town today, some of these names.
Well, that's why I thought, that's one thing that maybe Bill and I could work together on, is see if we could find some of the descendants who might want to show and stand and be acknowledged, you know, something like that. Do you think this marking is because this...
I think it was that...
Killed in Action?
The star designates Killed in Action.
Yes, it does, that's what I thought, and that's the name of the Post 76, isn't it?
Yeah.
Murray Reynolds.
Right.
Okay, so I just thought I'd make that for you, and hopefully, as, as the months go by, you know, we'll be reminding folks to please attend our ceremony, we have one every year, and hopefully, with this special recognition for the end of World War I, the 100th anniversary, people will show up and give the occasion, it's due reverence. Thank you.
Excellent, okay.
I, I don't, I just...
Here, Val, here, here.
Yeah, you can have that one.
All right, we're going to move now to item number seven, I'm going to ask Bill to take seven, and Sally eight, we'll go back and forth on this with Bill and Sally, okay?
Let's see, I grab mine. Item number seven, resolve, the Town of North Haven, I'm sorry, the Town of North Haven authorized the online, for the Town of North Haven authorized the online auction of surplus fire department assets with govdeals.com at a cost of 5% of the accepted selling fee. All revenue received will return to the Town of North Haven's general fund. Present there approximately 60 lengths of hose, that have failed annual OSHA service testing and are beyond repair. The Director of Finance, Edward Swinkowski, is authorized to determine acceptable bid offers.
Okay. What this is, ladies and gentlemen, is we have some assets in the fire department, which are no longer OSHA-certified, they're assets that are in storage, they're put aside, we thought, the fire chief and the fire department thought, that there'd be some value to this, so this govdeals.com is an entity where we could look to sell that, and see if we can recoup any money, but needless to say, aside from that, every year, we're reinvesting back in firefighter apparatus and hoses, this is just some excess assets that we can no longer use.
Who, I wonder who would buy, if it's not certified for OSHA?
Yeah.
Private citizens?
There, there may not be anyone to buy it, but it's a way to see if there's something out there.
See if there is, sure, yeah, and it's, I mean, the, the cost to us is conditioned on the sale, so, okay.
Have we used them before, I mean, for other surplus?
Not to my knowledge.
For police cars?
Well, we use, we use not gov.gov, gov.com for police cars, but we do resell police cars, and we get a good value for it. We put a reserve in there, could be $4,000 or $5,000, so we've had great success with that. This is something new, we're going to try it and see what happens.
The Police Department probably has similar... This Police Department probably has similar, I know as, you know, the vests become outdated or whatever, it seems like if this works out well, maybe-
Good.
The police may have things like this, too, that they, they need to retire, but somebody's willing to, you know, it seems like, again, this site would be, be ideal for anything that related to both fire and police.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll move, the resolution is read.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Sally, item number eight.
I'll start with, I will make a motion to appoint Joseph Cappucci, one Surrey Drive, to fill a Democratic vacancy as a constable, term to expire December 1st, 2019.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second, Bill?
I'll second.
In the discussion, I'll say, Joe Cappucci is a longstanding North Haven resident, a wonderful individual, a wonderful man who served our town very well in the Fire Commission, continues to serve, and I would be delighted also to sanction this appointment, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Bill?
Our next item is appointment of Robert Zambrano, 130 State Street, Unit G-12, to the Economic Development Commission, term to expire December 31st, 2019.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
A second.
All right, Robert Zambrano was recommended to us by our EDC Chairman, Mr. Richard Lopresti, there's a resume in here, I don't know Robert, but he comes highly regarded as the former Vice Chairman of the Hamden Economic Development Commission.
Yeah, I read his, he served there for about 13 years-
Yes.
And was also involved in banking in the area for many years, so he seems to be an appropriate appointment, I believe, for this, so, am I seconding that? I'll second that.
Okay, so, is there a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, next item.
The appointment of James Nesdale, 22 Mansfield Road, from an alternate to a full seat on the Blight Prevention Appeals Board, for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2020.
Is that a motion, Sal?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All right, just a little update on James Nesdale, this is not an easy board, ladies and gentlemen, Blight, there's a lot of emotion, and there's a lot of adversaries sometimes with regard to Blight in town, but James has been an alternate, and has been a regular member as an alternate, he has sat in when some of the existing members could not make it, so he has a lot of experience in this thing, he's come to us many times and has asked to step up, we have an opening, so, I would also endorse it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, next.
Our next one on the agenda is appointment of Kathy Spinato-Grant, 28 Sheffield Road, to the Blight Prevention Appeals Board as an alternate for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2020.
Okay, that's a motion, is a second.
I'll second that.
I'd like to thank Kathy Spinato-Grant for, number one, her cooperation with us on going through these boards and commissions, number two, for her willingness to step up as the alternate, so Kathy, thank you very much, and I'm delighted also to sanction this. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm always, I'm always, like, impressed with, you know, some of these other boards where there are alternates, because they go to a lot of meetings, but, you know, like alternate jurors or whatever, I guess are needed, you know, when you do need an alternate, and it's great that these, that people are willing to be alternates, as well as being, you know, members of the board, so, I think that's great that she's willing to do that.
Okay, next item.
Yes, I was a little surprised to see this in the agenda, the resignation of Joseph F. Derico Sr., 50 Cory Road, from the Board of Police Commissioners, effective June 25th, 2018.
Yes, so, Joe submitted his resignation, there are, there are some family issues that Joe has to attend to, we wanna commend Joe for the great job he did as Police Chairman, and I'd like to thank him for his support and his work he did behind the scenes on the SRO project that we brought to the town meeting. Joe, all these years, you're one of the longest-standing members of all the boards and commissions, Pete Criscoll on the Fire Commission is another longstanding member, so Joe and Pete really have, really been the longest-standing members, at least in my recollection, so, Joe, I appreciate everything you did, and we look forward to replacing the position, and your legacy will be longstanding, Joe, so thank you for what I think is about 28 years of service on this commission, thank you.
I, yeah, I would echo that, I remember Mr. Derico being involved in town affairs back, you know, I served on the Board of Finance from 1985 to '89, and he was heavily involved back then, and, you know, so I would like to echo your comments and thank him for his service, he was also, he is also a dog-walking friend of mine, you know how-
That's right, yeah.
When you walk your dog in certain places, you know, there's people, the same people, you get to, you develop a dog-walking relationship, which I did on the green when I was walking my dad's dog for all those years, so, I knew him not only as the Chairman of the Police Commission, and I had great respect for his, his work there, but also as a fellow dog walker and friend, so, I echo your comments about it, and was somewhat surprised to see his resignation.
Yeah, based on all his years of service, I think he's really set a high standard for, you know, in terms of how long he's volunteered to be part of, part of, you know, part of the town and helping the town out as a, as a, as a member of the Board of Police Commissioners, so it's a real high standard for all of us to follow.
You know, ladies and gentlemen, at a time when it's tough sometimes and difficult to have people with their busy lives step up and serve the town on the boards and commissions, to have an individual like Joe for 28 years, we've got a lot of longstanding commission members on all the boards and commissions, both on the Democratic Party side and the Republican side, and this day had to come, and we just move forward, and Joe, thank you.
Now, it's my understanding, I was reviewing the Charter when I noticed this resignation, because this, the Police Commission is an elected-
Yes.
-board, not an appointed board, and my reading of the Charter was, the Board of Selectmen has 60 days, so will we be doing-
Next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
So, the way this works, just so everyone knows, is because it's an elected position, whether it's a Democratic elected official on a board or a Republican, the parties, the Republican Party or the Democratic Party, through their own membership, comes up with a suggestion or a suggested replacement. On the appointed positions, it's a little bit more relaxed, but the, whoever we come up with that will present next month will fill the unexpired term, and then will have to run for election in the November 2019 election, so, so, you know, in the future, if this is a commission member, Sally, that's from the Democratic Party, then you and Kathy, Kathy Spinato, Kathy Spinato, you have the right and the option to come to us with your recommendation.
Right.
So, we'll be doing that with respect to replacing Joe.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So, we have, I, I think I read the motion to accept the resignation.
I'll second.
All right, so the motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right.
Number nine, I'll move the property tax refunds as listed in the agenda.
Okay, is there a second, Bill?
I'm just taking a quick second look at them. Again, nothing, nothing particularly, as often is the case, nothing particularly unusual or significant, so I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, item number 10, the next meeting of our Board of Selectmen is here at North Haven's Town Hall on Thursday, August 2nd, 2018. Item number 11, public comment. Mary White.
Mary White, similarly, I have a few topics I'd like to discuss, so the first one is, I just wanted to let you guys know that, I also let the Board of Education know, that I am doing research as far as getting the SROs additional training, because they're gonna get training, but to get them additional training with the Yale Child Study Center, so I'm gonna try and find out the availability and cost, so, right now, it's a, it's a holiday, so there's been messages left, and so, I'm in that phase right now. But, the SRO program at Yale Child Study is, is very well-known, it's excellent, it provides additional training, which would include crisis intervention, youth in crisis, threat assessment training, juveniles in trauma, juveniles in stress, juvenile, juvenile with emotional issues, juveniles with mental issues, et cetera, so it just provides them with additional training. Next is, so-
It's very, it's very nice that you're doing that, so-
Oh, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
No problem, and, let's see, and so it's my hope that they would have availability for all five of the SROs, but also the high school SRO, because I thought maybe to have all of them do it together, if they have availability, and if it's not cost prohibitive. Let's see, okay, so, relative to the fire alarms, last year at this time, there were 2,089, and this year, we have 2,000, or there were 2,251 alarms, so that represents 162 more alarms, so, the fire chief was discussing about the trend of the alarm, so the, the numbers are trending upwards, so, going back, like, looking back in five years, the numbers keep increasing, so at this time in 2013, there were 1,953 alarms, and so now, at this time, there are 298 more alarms, so the trend is definitely more alarms. There were, since the last meeting, there were 12 ALS intercepts, and there were 20 highway responses, 60 percent of the calls were EMS-related, and he stated that contrary to rumor, there's a rumor that 75 percent of the calls are EMS, and he said the range is in the high 50s, you know, 50 percent, or the low 60 percent, so, right on target with 60 percent of the calls being EMS-related. Since the last meeting, they had 347 emergencies, and 96 of those 347 calls were overlapping calls, so again, oh, well, that actually represents 27 percent, and so 96 people who called for help did not receive the fire department's paramedic, because he was responding to other emergency calls. So, relative, a lot of people are asking about the FEMA disaster declaration for North Haven, North Haven is not going to get a FEMA disaster declaration, what it is, is it would be a declaration that needs to be signed by the President, and it would be for the entire state, and so that hasn't happened yet, but it's on its way to, or is there on the President's desk, and I guess the, we will hear back, or the state will hear back, everybody will hear back, maybe at the end of July or early August, and the chief encourages people to document everything you have for damage, your invoices, et cetera, particularly if you are uninsured, as there are FEMA programs that you might be able to take advantage of. Relative to the fields, so I attended the last Board of Education meeting, and I was expressing the concern I still have regarding the high temperatures that these fields reach in the summertime, you know, for play and practice, you know, dehydration can take place, burns, and so doctor, so I was, I had mentioned some dates, in June, where the temperature was rather high, and I had asked if the temperatures of the fields had been taken, and Dr. Cronin stated that he believed that Steve Blumenthal had taken the temperatures on those days, but he would double-check with them, and so then, what had happened was, I was questioning, what is gonna happen in the summertime, where you have either town teams, or you have private teams, or you have adult teams or leagues, and they've provided their, you know, certificate of insurance, if they're, you know, a private adult team, and they've got their schedule in there, and, I don't know, deposit, however they're gonna work on that, if they have to pay, and I was gonna, I was asking, so what happens as far as the temperature, if it's like 100 degrees out, you know, or in the 90s, for sure, those field temperatures should be taken, so what Anita stated was, for the town teams and for the school teams, that Steve Blumenthal will take those temperatures, and if it determines that it's too hot, then they won't be permitted to play or practice, but as far as like, private, like, adult teams and things like that, they're, they have to make their own decision, so, so that was that. So, interestingly enough, there was a coach at the Board of Education meeting by the name of Brian Quinn, and he was speaking about these coaches, that they're very hard on the kids, and he said it's the, what we have to do is we have to educate the coaches, he was saying that the coaches in this town can be absolutely insane with what they drive the kids to do, and all types of weather, rain, ice, snow, cold, heat, so he's like, you have to educate the coaches, these are just kids, they're not professionals, if it's hot, you pull them off the field, so that's what he was recommending, coaches, I know that a meeting took, or was supposed to take place with Steve Blumenthal and all the coaches, so he was supposed to talk about this, so, hopefully that translates into reality, because otherwise, these kids could get seriously injured. Let's see, what else did I wanna say? Yeah, so, I was at the Board of Education meetings when they were talking about the fee schedule, and what they had come up with, as far as like, the town teams, that they would not, like Sally, you were talking about, that they would not be charging them this year, but they said, you know, for now, and for this year, we're not gonna charge them, so, they kinda left it a little open-ended, unless that's how I received it, but right now, they're not, they're not being charged. Let's see, oh, so also at those meetings, when they were discussing like, proceeds, monies, you know, raised or generated, they talked about the jamborees and the Battle of the Bands, and they were saying, reality, people who are familiar with these types of things, said that really, it's only gonna generate maybe like $4,000 a year, if that, so, you know, there's definitely going to be a problem, like, in eight or 10 years, when they do have to be replaced, coming up with the money, so, I mean, I had suggested setting money aside, whether it's on the town side or the BOE side, and, you know, with all the cuts and the crazy way that the state budget's gone, and so forth, I guess, you know, we can't, couldn't do that, but I, you know, bonding is like a 17-year thing, and so you could actually end up double-bonding, you know what I'm saying, like, you replace the fields, bond, and you did not pay it off, and then you're bonding again to replace them again, so I'm kinda like, not in favor of doing that, I'm more of like, let's try and save, but it doesn't sound like the rental fees, you know, I mean, we'll have to see how much they're gonna raise, but these other big ideas, like the Battle of the Bands or the Jamborees, are just not gonna raise that much money, so, I don't know, so, that's all.
All right, very good, thank you, Mary.
Well, Mary, I just, commenting on what you said about jamborees, one of the things that we talked about in this ad hoc committee that I'm on to look into fees, is, the problem with getting these jamborees, you know, is the lack of amenities at the field-
Exactly.
There's no rest rooms to speak of, except for the treaded porta potty, no, you know, the bleachers are limited, so, until you get, you know, no concession stand, whatever-
Right.
Until you get things like that, that was the impression that I was, was given.
Right.
But we're still determining what fees, if any, will, you know, it's pretty much set about fees for out-of-town organizations-
Private, yeah.
Or for private or for profit organizations.
Right.
That was relatively easy for the committee to come up with, some type of fee schedule recommendation, based on what other towns are doing.
Sure.
What we haven't really addressed yet is, is in-town private organizations, and so that remained, but you're right, I think it was at the March Board of Ed meeting that they voted to, to have the first season, so to speak, free for everyone, until, I thought the date was November 1st, does that ring a bell to you?
Um, I thought it was gonna be longer, like-
Yeah, no, I thought it was until sometime in November of 2018, and then, again, that's when this appointment of this committee was put together-
Yeah.
You know, which- You know, which I questioned, you know, we knew about these fields for years, why it wasn't kind of done ahead of time, but that's counterproductive to, you know, we have to move forward.
Move forward, right.
And we're trying to move forward.
Yeah, yeah. So like I said, my, my main concern is, we're not sure when we have to replace these things, but I think we should be ready in eight years. Doesn't mean we have to replace them in eight years, but we should be ready just in case. You know, we're hoping with the annual maintenance contract, that that's going to, you know, they come out, I think, between four and six times a season, so they really, you know, they're watching the seams and, you know, repairing and doing things, that the basic maintenance, you know, is, you know, people are, you know, beyond what they're doing, so I think it's good.
Right. The eight years is because the warranty is eight years.
It does expire in eight years.
But the life expectancy, I've heard eight to ten, twelve.
Ten, twelve, yeah.
But, you know, I, I think a lot of the, of that life expectancy might depend on hours of use.
That's true.
So, I, you know...
That's true, too, yeah. So interesting to see how it, how it proceeds.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Any other comment? All right. Seeing none. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you for watching, ladies and gentlemen. We'll see you in August. Have a good evening.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.